Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the City of Milpitas Planning Commission, April 27, 2022. For those of you joining via conference via Zoom, the link is on in the agenda. Any verbal comments to be provided during the planning commission by first registering for the Zoom meeting and providing your name and address? First item business, I just called the meeting to order. A pledge of allegiance, Commissioner Medina Ashby.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item, next item on agenda is roll call. Ms. Medina.
Thank you, Chair. I will now be taking attendance, starting with Commissioner Albana.
Present.
Commissioner Owasty is not present. He's absent this evening. Chair Chuan.
Present.
Vice Chair Ciardella.
Present.
Commissioner Galang.
Present.
Commissioner Medina Ashby.
Present.
And Commissioner Mosin. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Medina. Next item is Conflict of Interest Declaration. Mr. De Los Angeles.
Thanks, Chair. I ask whether any of the commissioners have a financial or personal conflict of interest on any of the items before you tonight. I'll start with a committer commissioner motion. Commissioner Medina Ashby. Commissioner Galang.
None.
Commissioner Albana.
None.
Vice Chair Ciardella.
None.
And Chair Chuan.
None. Just a quick reminder to the commissioners. Make sure when you're speaking into the mic, make sure you have the light on. Thank you.
And so let the record reflect none to that question.
Thank you, City Attorney. Next item, approval agenda. Do any of the commissioners have any comments? Or for the agenda? Planning Director.
No changes to the agenda, thank you. I would note that there were some additional public comments that were sent by email today that were provided to the commission earlier via email.
Thank you, Planning Director. Okay, if there's no comments, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Mosin.
I second the motion.
And second from Commissioner Medina Ashby. Do a roll call vote. Commissioner Mosin. Turn on your.
Yeah.
Commissioner Medina Ashby.
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Galang.
Aye.
Commissioner Albana.
Aye.
Vice Chair Ciardella.
Aye.
And Chair Chuan is aye. The motion passes. Agenda is approved. Next item is approval of meeting minutes for March 23rd. Do any commissioners have any comments or any corrections that need to be made for the meeting minutes for March 23rd? If there are none, can I get a motion to approve the meeting minutes for March 23rd?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Okay, I got a motion from Commissioner Medina Ashby. Do I have a second? And I got a second from Commissioner Albana. Okay, I'm gonna do roll call vote. Commissioner Mosin, since you were not present, you will abstain. Okay, and then Commissioner Medina Ashby. Commissioner Galang.
Abstain.
Okay, Commissioner Galang is gonna abstain. Okay. Commissioner Albana.
Aye.
And Commissioner Ciardella.
Aye.
Okay, and Chair Chuan is aye. Okay, so we have, let's see, one, two, three, four. Okay, so we do have a quorum. So, motion passes. Minutes for March 23rd is approved. Announcements. Do any of the planning commissioners have any announcements? Vice Chair Ciardella.
Yeah, I'd just like to announce that the Milpitas Rotary is having a golf tournament and dinner on May 7th. Contact the Milpitas Rotary Club. Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Medina Ashby, did you, did you have any comments or no?
No.
Okay. All right, just as Chair Chuan, I just wanna welcome everybody back. It's great to see everybody, you know, here, finally back here in the, in City Hall. It's been a long, what, two years? So it's good to have everybody back. All right. If no other announcements from planning commissioners, planning director.
Thank you, Chair Chuan. I just have a few announcements. I, I think you've all had the opportunity to meet our new city attorney, Michael Molti Tali Passo, who's here next, seated next to me. We have our regular city attorney, Martin Day Los Angeles here to help us. Since the new city attorney just started yesterday, it wasn't fair for him to be thrown into the ring, so to speak, tonight. So he's here to observe and we welcome him. I'm glad to be here in our first in-person meeting. I also wanted to announce, or anyone that is here tonight or listening online, that the planning department is going to start issuing a quarterly newsletter with updates about activities of the department to sort of tell our story a little bit. The first one is scheduled to come out in June and we are actively asking people to sign up for the, to receive the newsletter. You can do so by going to the city's website at www.milpitas.gov. We also have a new shorter website, again, www.milpitas.gov forward slash planning department. And there's a box on the left-hand side where you can put in your email address and receive those quarterly newsletters regularly. I'll be saying more about that as time goes by. And last of all, I wanted to wish a happy Administrative Professionals' Day to our wonderful recording secretary, Liz Medina. She's our recording secretary and we call her the fixer of all things. So she keeps the department running and certainly, you know, provided all of the preparation for tonight's meeting. And a lot goes into having these in-person meetings. So I wanted to thank her for all of her hard work in the department and wish her a good day today. Thank you.
Thank you, Planning Director, and happy Administrative Professionals' Day. All right, next item is public forum. Those interested are invited to address planning commission on any subject non-on tonight's agenda, in person or orally via Zoom webinar. Instructions are on the agenda. Speakers may provide their name and city of residence for the recording secretary's record and comments may be limited to three minutes or less. As an item not listed on the agenda, no response is required from city staff or the planning commission and no action can be taken. Planning commission may instruct the staff to place the item on a future meeting agenda. Looking at the audience, is there anyone here that would like to speak on the public forum for items not on tonight's agenda? Okay, we don't have anyone there. Okay. Ms. Medina, do we have anyone on Zoom that wants to speak?
We have no community members in the Zoom queue waiting for public forum.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Medina. Okay, next item on the agenda is a public hearing. So first item, over to you, Planning Director or Mr. Fasadi.
So I'll do just a quick introduction. So we have our senior planner, Michael Fasadi, here to present the staff report. And as noted in the meeting packet, this is a development project by City Ventures. It's a town home project located on Hurret Court, which is within the transit area, specific plan, planning area, also known as the Milpitas Metro specific plan, planning area under the plan that is, will be adopted later this year by the council. And as Michael will present, there's a number of different entitlements that are required for this project. Primarily, we'll be looking at the site development permit. There's also a tentative map. And we're looking at and kind of an interesting new type of housing product here. It's townhomes, but they include ADUs on the ground floor. So, you know, in recent years, there's been a lot of interest in, at the state and local level in providing accessory dwelling units or ADUs. And this is the first time that we've seen that in a townhome project. So it's a little bit unique and we're pleased to present the staff report to the planning commission. I'll turn it over to Michael.
Thank you, Director Thomas, and good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, missionaries and fellow staff and Milpitas residents. As mentioned, the item before you is a request for development application for City Ventures. Next slide, please. The application is for a number of different entitlements, which include a site development permit, conditional use permit, vesting tentative map and density bonus permit, tree removal permit and environmental assessment to allow a demolition of two industrial buildings, removal and replacement of 17 ordinance-sized trees and development of 56 townhome condominiums and 24 accessory dwelling units at 1752 1810 Hurret Court. The residential development will consist of eight multifamily residential buildings up to 48 feet in height, about four stories, and 84 vehicle parking spaces, along with associated site improvements, all on a 1.92 acre site. The project proposed eight below-market rate units for sale, which allows the developer to invoke state density bonus law pursuant to government code section 65915 and Senate Bill 330, also known as the Housing Crisis Act. By invoking state density bonus law and SB 330, the developer is eligible for concessions, waivers and parking standards different from the city standards. The picture in front of you is a rendering of one of the buildings that will be facing Montague Expressway. Next slide, please. But here is a satellite image of the property at 1752 1810 Hurret Court. It's outlined in the yellow. It is located west of the Ellison Park Town Home Development, built by New Home Company approximately four or five years ago and southeast of Mabel Mattos Elementary School. Next slide, please. The zoning map demonstrates the project's site zoning designation and overlay district. The properties are located within the transit area specific plan or TASP area and the future Metro Milpita specific plan area. Just a reminder, the commission, the TASP has been adopted since 2008 and these zoning standards have been in place since then for the past 14 years. This project is located at the very high-density mixed-use, we call it MXD3 zoning district, and that's represented in the purple color. The light tan represents the multifamily high-density residential zoning district and the light blue represents institutional where the school is located. Next slide, please. This project requires a site development permit to develop the 56 townhome residential units. In total, the project will have 32 two-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath units and 24 three-bedroom, two-bath units. Each two-bedroom unit would have one car parking garage. And while each three-bedroom unit would have a two-car parking garage and a 280-square-foot attached accessory dwelling unit, studio unit, that is, where a person or a couple could live completely independent from the main residence. In total, in regards to density, the project would have 80 residential units, which equals a density of 41.67 units per acre. The project also includes site improvements such as internal driveways to access the parking garages, a micro dog park with benches, grass turf area and shortened lawn, long-term bicycle parking and the planting of up to 50 new trees. Next slide, please. The project also includes a vesting tentative map, which can only be approved by a conditional use permit. The tentative map will allow the developer to subdivide the units into condominiums where they will be made for sale. Unlike fee simple ownership, condominium ownership means that the owner has individual title to the inside space of the unit. But all the owners will have an undivided interest in the remainder of the property, which is managed through a homeowners association. Because the subdivision is more than five residential units, the city council has the final decision on the project with a recommendation of approval by the planning commission. Next slide, please. The project also includes a density bonus permit, which is allowed for projects that incorporate affordable housing units. City of Milpitas, via Affordable Housing Ordinance, requires all developers to incorporate up to 15% of their total units to, as affordable units. The image above represents all 56 townhomes. 15% of 56 is 8.4. The developers propose to develop eight residential units identified as the reddish-brown color and the yellow units on the map above. The reddish-brown units represent the two-bedroom units and the yellow units represent the three-bedroom units with the attached ADUs. A .4 unit is referred to as a fractional unit. Since a fractional unit cannot physically be developed, developer will pay an in-lu fee, which is calculated by the housing department. The fee is based on a calculation directly from the Affordable Housing Ordinance and paid before building permit issuance. Since the city has the Affordable Housing Ordinance, which has a greater percentage of affordable housing than state density bonus law requires, developers automatically grant a state density bonus law provisions. Next slide, please. These provisions include concessions, waivers and parking reductions. In summary, density bonus law prohibits local jurisdictions such as ours from requiring a developer to meet certain objective standards like setbacks, heights or required parking spaces. As long as a developer can demonstrate that relief of the standard equates to an actual identifiable cost reduction, cost savings, that is. For instance, per the TASP, zoning, or the TASP specific plan and the zoning standards, projects in the MXD3 zoning district must have a 35-foot front and 50-foot rear yard setback. But since the project qualifies for density bonus law, the developer qualifies for a setback waiver because the waiver of the development standard results in an actual and identifiable cost reduction by allowing a developer a larger building footprint, which creates greater flexibility and density in the costs associated with the development of the units. Furthermore, the applicant is required to dedicate over 0.3 acres of their property to Santa Clara County roads and airports in order to expand Montague Expressway to an eight-lane thoroughfare, which automatically limits the amount of land on the portion of property facing Montague where the waiver would be provided. Next slide, please. Furthermore, the parking reductions also provide an actual and identifiable cost reduction because there is no finance, there is a financial cost to build additional parking. Therefore, the project qualifies for the parking waiver. In order to demonstrate the parking requirement, staff has created a table above which shows the parking requirement for what we're used to, the TASP standards. And then another area that shows where the state density bonus law requires. TASP requires 108 parking spaces because all projects in TASP have a guest parking requirement. State density bonus law limits parking spaces and completely removes guest parking spaces altogether. They do that in conjunction with the project having affordable units as well as being located within a half mile from transit. Therefore, the applicant is proposing to develop the required parking standards per state density bonus law. And it should be noted that the proposed parking is consistent with the policies of TASP. By reducing parking and increasing multimodal options such as walking, biking or using public transit, less parking is actually required. Next slide, please. To further support and to further support access to transit, developer has proposed a VTA bus stop in front of their development, which was actually a recommendation from VTA themselves. Next slide, please. Also, the project, as I previously stated, is less than a half mile from the Milpitas Transit Station, further alleviating the need for a vehicle. Next slide, please. The project's design concept includes four-story buildings heights insistent with existing and planned residential development along Montague Expressway. The contemporary design includes the following design accents and materials. A flat parapet roof, a stucco finish with cyber fiber cement siding exterior, metal awnings and metal railing accents, a fiber cement window and door trim, decorative front entry doors and sectional garage doors. The desire of these colors and materials was, was used to complement the existing high-density neighborhood that is located both north and east of the site. Next slide, please. The project includes a removal of 17 ordinance-sized trees. A portion of the tree removal is required simply for the Montague Expressway expansion that would eventually occur when Santa Clara County roads and airports widen to Montague Expressway. In order to develop the site, all the trees will need to be removed, but will be replaced with approximately 50 new trees with potential tree species such as Chinese pistachio, crepe myrtle and brisbane box. Shrubs, grass and ground cover will also be planted to beautify the site. Next slide, please. The TASP requires all new development to provide parkland or parkland fees for new parkland. The parkland fee is based upon the estimated number of persons expected to reside at the development and the estimated value of parkland in the city of Milpitas. The project proposes 56 units, resulting in an estimated population of approximately 139 individuals. Based on that population estimate, the applicant must provide 0.49 acres of parkland, which we rounded numbers to approximately $1.360 million. All projects in the TASP area are required to pay a transit area development impact fee, our TASP fee. A portion of that fee already pays directly for parkland. A part portion of the TASP fee for this project is valued at $1.1 million, equivalent to 0.4 acres of parkland. This amount will be applied to the project's parkland requirement, leaving a delta of 0.09 acres to be satisfied. To satisfy the 0.09 acre delta, the applicant has incorporated over 0.4 acres as private recreation space on-site. This is something that's permitted per the Milpitas Municipal Code. For example, each townhome has private balconies. If you were to take all the square footage of all those balconies, it would equate to 10,600 square feet. In addition, the project also includes an additional 7,800 square feet of on-site public open space, including a dog park with benches and walkable sidewalks. Next slide, please. The project includes 24 attached ADUs located on the ground floor of each of three-bedroom townhome condominiums. Each integrated ADU is designed as a 280-square-foot studio unit with a living, sleeping area, bathroom, kitchenette and separate front door entrance. ADUs are governed by two ways. One, the city has an ordinance, accessory dwelling unit ordinance, that talks about what the city allows and doesn't allow. We took that ordinance from Senate Bill 13 that was developed by the state of California. Senate Bill 13 authorizes the creation of accessory dwelling units in areas zoned for single-family or multifamily dwelling residential uses in all of California. Since MXD3 permits multifamily residential uses, ADUs are allowed in that area. Next slide, please. The applicant will need to pay the following impact fees. As I referenced before, there's a TASP fee, also known as a TATF fee. And we roughly calculated that at $2.4 million. The applicant will be required to pay a public art fee, which equates to one-half of 1% of the building development cost. That, we have a rough estimate of that around $12,000 that would go directly into the public art fund. And per the Affordable Housing Ordinance, they will have to pay the .4 of that fractional unit into the Affordable Housing Fund. Next slide, please. A notice was published in the Milpitas Post and a sign was placed on the property. The city sent out over 1,175 postcards to residents and property owners of the project. As of today, I believe we received six comments via email. They've been provided to the commission as attachment C of your packet. In summary, residents have, from nearby areas, have concerns about unwanted nuisance, nuisances, inadequate parking, lack of emergency access, traffic congestion and a quest to, and a specific request to add more inbound, inbound, outbound access point along Montague Expressway. Planning can address the construction impacts or what's considered construction nuisances and the parking. The applicant will be required to follow the municipal code requirements regarding construction. The city permits construction activity between 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM weekdays and weekends. Construction, as long as you have an active building permit and you develop or you do construction between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM, you're allowed to develop anywhere in the city. And that's a requirement that all developers and all, anyone that builds construction in City of Milpitas has. As regarding to the parking, the applicant has met the requirement from the state of California. The hope is that residents will utilize other means of transit along with their cars, which includes walking, biking, light rail and public transit. As previously stated, a bus stop is proposed along Montague Expressway to provide more options to use other than your vehicle. Furthermore, the task was created to provide housing opportunities without the need of a vehicle and more opportunities for transit. I believe representatives of fire and traffic are here to answer any questions about the emergency access and traffic congestion. Choose to have any. Next slide, please. Lastly, the project has been carefully analyzed against state law, the Milpitas General Plan, the TASP Metro Specific Plan and the zoning ordinance, which includes findings that included a compatible design project of neighboring projects, consistency with the Milpitas zoning ordinance, Milpitas General Plan, Milpitas Transit Area Specific Plan. For components of the project that are not consistent with the zoning ordinance, such as the waivers for the setbacks and for the parking, those have been dealt with or rectified by the state density bonus law and Senate Bill 330. Lastly, the project meets the conditions of approval per Government Code Section 66474 regarding subdivision law and the subdivision map act. Next slide, please. In closing, staff recommends the planning commission open the public hearing to receive comments. Move to close the public hearing, consider the exemptions in accordance to CEQA of this project, so the residential infill per CEQA Section 15195 and adopt resolution number 22-005 recommending city council approve site development permit, conditional use permit, vesting tentative map, density bonus permit, tree removal permit and environmental assessment, subject to the conditions of approval. This concludes staff summary of the project. The applicant, City Ventures, also has a presentation for you. And I'd like to introduce Samantha Hauser, Senior Vice President of City Ventures, to make that presentation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Fasadi. Welcome, Ms. Hauser.
Thank you, Mr. Fasadi. Good evening, Chair and Planning Commissioners. My name is Samantha Hauser. I'm with City Ventures and I'm excited to be here tonight to talk about the Hurret Court project. Next slide, please. I'm just a little bit about us. City Ventures is an infill developer. We strategically find sites that are located in close proximity to public transportation and we think that's really important and we, we like to emphasize the pedestrian and the cyclist. We think that that's a sustainable and responsible way to build. And we are a sustainable developer. We have been doing solar, all-electric homes for the past 10 years. This project is proposed no differently. So there's no gas proposed to the site. The solar panels come standard. We do things like EV charging in each and every garage. We design creatively to use less lumber and we use Nest thermostats, energy-efficient appliances, and low-impact landscaping and low-flow water fixtures. We think those are things that are really important in the context of California's current climate. And we're really excited that Milpitas has such a dedication to things like reclaimed water. This project will be extending the reclaimed water backbone down Montague Expressway. Next slide, please. I wanted to show you some of the past projects that we've done. Part of being an infill developer, and if you Part of being an infill developer, and if you go to the next slide, please, you'll see that we have projects that have all different types of intensities, aesthetics, programs. And so part of being this infill developer is recognizing that we're building in existing neighborhoods and that we're not the first ones in. So we look especially closely at intensity and architecture and how to take cues from some of the projects around here. We're really excited at the prospect of being part of the task area. We think the city's done a really nice job with the architecture that's already been built on those projects. Next slide, please. So this is a true infill site. It's walkable to BART, the VTA Transit Hub, to the elementary school, to the future McCandless Park, and to the really wonderful retail at the Great Mall. So we're really excited about the location. If you go to the next slide, you'll see what's currently on the site. A single-story industrial. And what's super interesting to me is that if you look at what this area looked like a decade ago, most of the area actually looked like these buildings. But if you go to the next slide, you'll see the juxtaposition. This is panoramic, so it's a little bit skewed, but we're looking straight down into the cul-de-sac that it's existing on Harret Court. And you'll see the juxtaposition between these really dynamic homes that were built in the Ellison Park project and the single-story project that we're looking at today. So we're really excited about bringing something warm, vibrant, and dynamic to the site. If you go to the next slide, you'll see that we have a uniquely shaped site. We have public roads on three of the project's frontages. So we worked really closely with staff on activating the streets, making sure that we had front doors along both Montague and Harret, making sure that we were providing landscape strips, parkway strips with adequate landscaping, really large-sized public street trees and good lighting to really help bolster pedestrianism. There is not a public sidewalk along Montague right now. And then number thirteen, as Mr. Fasati presented, is the new bike, sorry, not bike, bus stop that we're proposing along the frontage. We're also really excited at the mix of different housing types. So having one, two, and three-bedroom homes throughout here at different affordability levels should cater to a bunch of different types of families and homeowners. We think that that's really important in the context of the housing crisis that's happening now. If you go to the next slide, you'll see some of our architecture. We really wanted to take cues like the metal eyebrows that you see here. And if you go to the next slide, you'll see some of our colorful doors that we're putting in here. The project to the north has these red doors. There are tangerine-colored doors across the street. And so we're really excited to kind of pick a color palette that's vibrant and that kind of coalesces with the existing project. And we also really tried to have a lot of projections and articulation along the project, different material types, so that this really feels like a well-articulated building. Our next slide is our rendering. And I'm, you know, staff well-presented the fact that each project, each home, has private open space. So the ADUs all have a ground floor patio, and then there are second and fourth story balconies on the townhomes. And we think that the roof deck-style balconies on the fourth floor are going to be really well utilized. And then if you go to the next slide, you'll see our color palette. We wanted to pick cues that were similar to what is in the existing neighborhood, but distinct enough that this is kind of its own standalone project. So we're really looking forward to your feedback on these things. And then the last slide is just some imagery from our amenities. So we're providing a pocket dog park with the dog bone benches. I saw these at a park in South San Francisco. I thought they were very cool. And then passive seating area and a barbecue area are the amenities. So that, the last slide is just a thank you. We really appreciate working with the city of Milpitas. Staff has been tough but fair, which I think always makes for a really good project. And we're just here to answer any of your questions, and we really appreciate your time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hauser. At this time, so just want to go over, because I realize we're first day coming back into the the council chambers here. So if you have a question, go ahead and put on speak, and I'll address you kind of the first whoever, first C. Put the light on. And then if you're not speaking, then go ahead and turn it off. But if I haven't called on you yet and you do have a question, just leave it on so that way I'll know that you still have that question. So anyways, at this time, do any of the commissioners have any questions? And I want to specifically address it to Mr. Fasati and Ms. Hauser. So any questions for them? Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Madina Ashby.
Okay, what is the difference? Well, what is an ADU? Well, I know what an ADU is, when you build it behind a house, but I've never heard of one built like with townhouses. So is it like a studio? Or I'll let you explain.
No, no, that's a great question. So whether it's an ADU is an accessory dwelling unit, meaning someone can live there independently. I think what you're referring to when you hear about it, separate, like a tiny house behind a house, that's referred to as a detached ADU. You may not be surprised that in the city of Milpitas, there's many attached ADUs. Either way, what the way they're constructed is they're completely separated in regard to the main residence. They're not separated physically, but you can live separately without the main residence. So in other words, like the walls, even though it's attached to the main house, the walls have a special fire rating that if something were to happen to the main residence, it would be a lot more stronger to the accessory dwelling unit would have a fire ring where it wouldn't be severely impacted as much compared to as a bedroom. So it's a separate unit attached.
Okay, so is it? Does it have like living room, kitchen, dining room, bedroom?
It has sleeping quarters. It has sanitary quarters. It has a bathroom. It has kitchen, kitchenette facilities. Someone can live there independently.
Okay, so it's like, not like a studio, a one-bedroom unit?
Well, when I think of a one-bedroom unit, I think of a living room, kitchen, and then going, a separate door that goes to the one bedroom. Per the project plans, this is a studio unit.
Okay, that's what, yeah, that's why I originally asked. So it's a studio, and you guys are calling it an ADU unit? Because I know, so I'm a real estate agent, so in my profession, there's like the ADU units that are detached and then the junior AD units which are attached. So it's just, I'm just trying to get an understanding of the layout of the unit. So it's a studio that you guys are calling an ADU?
Correct, correct. You could think of a big apartment building that rents out studios, one and two bedrooms. It's built just like a studio unit.
Okay, got it.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Madina Ashby. Vice Chair, Seattle ICU, have your light on.
Yeah, I've got several questions here on the, actually, the picture that we're seeing of the building in front of us. The fourth floor has got the balconies. And I'd like to know how high the fencing, if you want to call that, is? And the brown fencing area, is that wood? And is there a separation so some young child can't climb over it?
Maybe you could address that.
Sure, thank you for the question. So I believe that the fencing is going to be between forty-two to forty-eight inches, but that'll be governed by the California Building Code, so we'll absolutely ensure that it's tall enough. It's not going to be a wood. It's going to be a wood-style product that's more durable. We don't want anything that over time really needs a lot of, we don't want anything that rots over time the way wood would. I also understand your question about children. I have a four-year-old, as we spoke about earlier, and they climb everything. So this will be done in a way where you don't have slats the child can climb over. It will be flush on the inside, whether there's another panel or something else. It will not be a safety issue because it is a fourth floor, to your point.
Okay, I've got a few more questions, too. See, the dog park, which I think that's the first one I've ever seen in a residential area like that. Is there going to be a little place for the plastic bags so you can pick up the waste?
I think it's a great idea. We're thinking about having the benches, having, you know, having it be fenced off so that you can have your dog off-leash, the plastic bags, and then potentially a dog watering station.
And then my next questions are about the plant material. I noticed on the list of plants, you don't have sizes of the plants.
Sure, so one of the things that we like to do is make sure that at the time that the project is built, that the plantings actually look like plantings. So no one is going to put in a fifteen-gallon tree here. I'd say the minimum size will be a twenty-four-inch box for any tree. I'm not sure about shrubs. It would have to, our landscape architect would dictate that. But a twenty-four-inch box for the trees and for things like street trees will probably be at around a thirty-six-inch box.
Okay, and then let's see, what are the other questions I've got here? You know, because if everybody's concerned about the drought, have you thought about putting succulents in that area that don't take, you know, you water them like once every thirty days?
Absolutely. So this is going to be native landscaping. I'm not sure if there'll be succulents. Our landscape architect is actually on Zoom. If you want more detailed species answers. But everything will be drought-tolerant. Native landscaping will comply with the Wilo requirements. Everything will be on recycled water, so there will be no potable water watering any of the plants on this project. And then within the home, as I mentioned in the presentation, it will all be low-flow water fixtures. That's part of the ethos of what we do.
And then one of my next questions is, you know, you see the picture of the buildings and in the patios area up in the fourth floor, you've got plant material there. Will that be planted by you guys or it have to be planted by the owner?
We typically let the owner plant those. We usually offer an option where we provide planting, and nine times out of ten, the owner wants to do something themselves. So we will surely offer it, but I think that the owner will probably plant them themselves.
And that's the same with the ADU units?
With the, yeah, so there, so the planters that you're seeing in this rendering, that would be common landscaping, and we would plant that, but any patio plant. So if they want to put in, you know, a vegetable garden or whatever it is, we will provide the water source and make it accessible, but we won't provide the plantings in that area.
Okay, let me see if I have any more questions here. I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Commissioner Galong.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I removing seven and size trees and you're placing, what type of trees are you going to replace?
So, sure, so there's a, there's a plant list that's in the, that's in the packet and has a lot of different options that are listed. But the ones that are anticipated for Montague Expressway and for the right-of-way are elm trees. Those are the same trees that are planted across the street. And so we thought it would be nice to kind of bring the, to have kind of a cohesive street along Montague. But we're flexible, so if there's a tree type that you'd particularly like to see, we'd love to consider it if it's drought tolerant.
But so the other site would be different trees, you're talking about different?
Within the site?
Yeah.
Yes, I mean, we'll probably have, I would think, ten different tree types. And again, Chris Fortunato from C2 Collaborative is on Zoom, and if we want to bring him in, Ms. Medina, he could probably speak more specifically to the tree species.
If you could have him raise his hand in the Zoom attendees queue, because we have several Samantha Hausers.
Oh, thank you. I'm everywhere. Mr. Fortunato, if you could raise your hand, that would be well appreciated.
While we're waiting, if I may, through the chair, I just wanted to point out for all the commissioners on sheets L two and L three within the plan packet that was on your desk and included in the meeting packet for tonight is the landscape plan for this project as well as a detailed list of all the trees and plants that are included for this project. So you have that information available to you in the meeting packet.
I think I'm on now.
Yes, you are. Go ahead.
Great. Hi, hello, everyone. Chris Fortunato, C2 Collaborative. We're the landscape architects for the project.
Okay, how come not you?
Go ahead, Ms., who is going to be speaking? Was it going to be Mr. Fortunato?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so we'll probably have about ten to twelve different species of trees on the plan. Low water use. One of the great things about the site is that it does have the reclaimed water system, but we still have to follow all the state guidelines for water calculations and that. So, yeah, I think we've got twelve different kinds of species. We've got flowering. We've got the elm trees. We've got some trystanias, which are taller. So that'll help bring some scale to the buildings, lagostrumias, things along that nature. So a variety of different types and sizes of plant material.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Galong, did that answer your question?
Thank you. I have another question.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Commissioner Galong.
Regarding about, I'd like to follow up the questions of Ms. Ashby, but ADUs, why you don't build ADU in the second floor or third floor?
Why we didn't build them on the?
The first floor, yeah, the ADU dwelling unit, why it was built only on the first floor?
Sure, so I think we wanted to make sure that the ADU was furnishable. I mean, that's actually why we asked for the setback reduction with the density bonus waiver is we wanted to make sure that it was an appropriate size so that you didn't have any furniture that needed to fold up. There was nothing kind of odd. And so when you put it on the second floor, the circulation that's required to get to it eats into some of the square footage. So by putting on the ground floor, we were able to maximize the furnishability and also have private patios for all of the ADUs.
Okay, on the first floor, do you have a separate entrance?
Yes, and so, you know, to add to what Mr. Fasati said to Commissioner Medina Ashby, so all of the ADUs have their own dedicated private entrance and their own dedicated private patio. So the townhome owner with the living space above does not go through that person's patio and does not need to go through their private open space to get to their home. And then in addition, the ADU, it's not condominiumized separately. So that's what makes it an ADU. It is a studio, but legally it's part of the townhome unit above it and will be sold with the townhome unit above it as a rental, right?
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Albana. Commissioner Albana, you got to leave it on. Okay, thank you.
Okay, it came off. Yeah, thank you. So if there are fifty-six townhomes and there are twenty-four ADUs, in other words, the twenty-four ADUs would be part of twenty-four units?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, because for a point of clarification, in order to meet the density, we have to have the ADUs, correct? Which whoever buys the one home has an ADU, only twenty-four owners, right?
That's correct.
They couldn't be subdivided and resold?
No, it has to go by together.
Yes.
I see. That's a good idea. Now, I was going to ask Ms. Hauser here, is you mentioned everything is solar? Nothing powered by electricity? That's wonderful. Is this the very first project, Mr. Rivas, that we have here in the city?
I think there's a majority of our projects that do have solar. One interesting component of the Harret Court project has to do with the way they're doing condominiums. If they were to do a fee simple development, and I had a house and, say, Samantha had a house, and I need my solar to be fixed, I'd have to go on her roof, and there could be some contention. By doing the condominium, the roofs themselves, if I'm not mistaken, are under the homeowner's, the homeowner association ownership, and it's easy to manage the site improvements as well as the rooftop. So that's one interesting. And by doing that in the homeowner association owning the whole roof, they can maximize the solar capability of it because they have the whole roof to use.
That's good. So do we have walkways, enough walkways now? Because I understand Montague is going to be expanded, but we do have enough walkways, right? The project provides that.
Well, so the project site, I believe, is two point one three acres actually in size. And part of the provisions, if you were to recommend approval for the project, is that the applicant give up point, over point three acres of that property so Montague can be expanded. So once it is expanded, the sidewalks that are, that have a preliminary design through the task So once it is expanded, the sidewalks that are, that have a preliminary design through the task, that's what a Huret, a City Ventures must follow. Along with those sidewalks along Montague, they have internal walkways. You can kind of get to the back of the unit.
And a bicycle lane. We have bicycle lanes?
The project's not, typically bicycle lanes are on, on public streets. Um, I don't believe Montague has a public street because it's a main thoroughfare. It's almost like a highway. Uh, but if you were saying, can someone ride their bicycle in, out and around? I probably wouldn't recommend it because there are more walkways.
I see. How would, how would young kids go to school if they wanna, they walk?
They, they would be able to clearly walk right in front, onto the sidewalk, down around where the Carl Jr. is and up to Maple Matos. And if I'm not mistaken, Director Thomas, there's a consideration for the metro development that um, we're considering designing a roadway from Montague to the Canlis, different design. But that's being contemplated. That would give even, even more accessibility.
I see. Thank you very much. That's right. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Albana. Any other questions from any of the commissioners to the uh, Mr. Fasati or the applicant? I have some, some questions myself here, just uh, you know, some of it I'll, I'll wait for uh, you know, maybe hearing from, you know, Mr. uh, Steve Chan. But uh, you know, just wanted to address some of the, you know, questions and, you know, around the, you know, public comment that was in our, in our packet. Um, you know, number one was, you know, clearly it's, I, I realize that it is in compliance, you know, the, the parking aspect of it. Um, just wanted to understand, um, you know, supposedly eight, 108 units, um, you know, without the um, if it's not in the uh, uh, reduced parking, but it's actually 84 spaces for the number of units there. So uh, for those new residents can, that are planning to, you know, join, you know, into the, the community, what was some of the messaging or the planned messaging for them? Um, you know, in terms of, you know, parking, considering there's some limitations there?
A- absolutely. It's a great question. And so if you go to our website, you'll see that everything we do is solar, electric and sustainable. And it's part of um, the platform of how we sell homes. And when we're in something like a transit oriented area, and we've done this over in East San Jose, we've done this in Santa Clara next to the Caltrain. Um, it's part of how we package the message of sustainability. And we really believe that getting people out of their cars and walking to the BART or taking the new bus from, you know, taking the bus from the new bus stop is the way to do it. So it's advertised so that when people come to the project, there's no surprise. It's also done very formally as a disclosure. There are also guidelines in the CCNRs. So um, it will be thoroughly covered from both a marketing perspective and also a disclosures perspective.
Okay, um, so it just wanted to know, you know, because you're gonna get a lot of various different residents, you know, wanting to come in and, and, you know, have these type of, you know, questions and stuff. You know, what's, where's the overflow? Like, let's say, you know, like someone decides they want to have a party or something, right? Um, you know, is there going to be a restriction on them or, you know, I mean, where's going to be the overflow? For, you know, let's say they get, you know, guests, you know, I realize that there's also going to be some parks and maybe they might have some guests coming over, but where would that be?
To have overflow parking?
Right.
I mean, I think what we, I mean, and this is far and away not the first project that we've done like this. We've built across from the San Francisco BART station. We've built across from the Palma BART station in Daly City. I mean, I mentioned Santa Clara. We really try to find these sites that are, are stated like this. And so what people have done, um, is they've either designated a parking space for rideshare, car share, Uber drop off and pickup. We provide dedicated bicycle parking in every single garage as well as visitor bicycle parking. And we rea- we really try to provide a way through this by using greener methods of transportation, especially in an area like the task, which is, you know, kind of founded on this idea of being close to art.
Another question I had, uh, maybe for Mr. Fasati, um, you know, has there been a, uh, you know, once this project was, you know, first initiated, has there been any town hall meetings or any community meetings with, you know, the nearby residents or anything like that?
The, with the city, because we just started formally coming back to City Hall. Um, prior to the, prior to the public notice, we used an, a virtual online forum. Um, the project was presented to all members of the, of the city of Mel Peters over, I believe, a month ago. We posted the plans, posted the project description. We posted our contact information if there were to have any questions about the project. We haven't had any town hall meetings.
Okay, so no town hall meetings, but it was just a, a, a presentation that, you know, they can go view and listen in. Is that correct?
Well, right, but I, I just want to preface that we haven't had any town hall meetings the past two years.
Okay. Well, what I meant was, to me, town hall meetings, not necessarily coming together, but you can also have it like as a Zoom meeting, right?
You know, where, you know, residents can, you know, so has there been ones similar to that or? Um, out, outside the online public forum where people could access the plans and contact staff? No, there wasn't a formal invitation.
Okay, so there was a public forum there that uh, you know, could be addressed. Like if someone showed up and asked questions, they, it was available to them, right?
Uh, actually more there's a public forum that here's the project and the plans. If you have any questions, I'm the project manager. They could direct.
Okay, all right. So, all right. So it was offered that, and they, they could actually come in and henceforth we have some emails as well.
Correct. Cause the only notices, I never received any comments at that time. The only comments I received is when, I believe the public notice came out in the, the comments that you've, that we provided you as attachment C.
Okay, right. Then the next question I had, uh, you know, in terms of, um, you know, I realize that, uh, you know, I'm thinking in terms of the land use aspect of it, um, just want to be clear. I, I realize that, um, so one of the concerns is around schooling. Um, you know, maybe there, you know, because I realize there's, it's near Maple Matos and I also realize there's some private schools around there. Uh, what were some of the considerations around that? And either one of you can answer if you're able to.
Sure. Well, let me, and, and I kind of want to bring the planning commission back to the task BIR that was, that was created in 2008. Um, environmental impact reports review a number of different issues that could potentially happen if you approve certain projects. So the task BIR recognized that we'd have over 7,200 units in the city of Mel Peters. And that the schooling system would be able to handle whatever 7,200 units would provide. The project from Hurat Court with the 56 townhomes were still under that 7,200 unit mark. Therefore, technically, because the project's consistent with the, the task BIR, along as the residential infill project, the city doesn't perceive that the, the school's district itself can't handle the additional residents that were to come in.
Okay, so was there a discussion with MUS? So MUSD is aware of, of this project? And, and so there have been discussions with um, the board as well as the superintendent?
Well, well, two things. One, we, um, City Ventures has spoken directly with the superintendent, I believe. But two, in regards to the legal sequel component, the project itself is going to be adding units that have already been contemplated. Uh, so we tried to cover both ends. We had the applicant speak with um, uh, super, with Harold Jordan. And she's aware of this problem.
Okay, all right.
Please.
Please.
Um, so, so yes, we have Matt and we're, we're also having another meeting in a couple of weeks. Um, you know, we really appreciate the fact that we're right adjacent to the elementary school. And um, we do expect maybe some children to be generated. The project is going to be marketed to first time home buyers. Um, we usually get a lot of very young children on this type of home. Um, and we've, we've built over 50 projects that are similar to this. Um, so I don't see it being a huge generator for schools, but we will be paying um, impact fees. And if I'm not mistaken, the state has just approved, um, increasing those impact fees by double what they have in years past. They do that every two years. So the project is anticipating paying the impact fees at the state's new rate as soon as it's adopted by the school district.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Um. I think those are the questions I have, you know, for the, the time being. I'm just thinking, uh, I have a, a commissioner at Media Nashby. Go ahead.
One more. Um, what is the price point and for the regular price point? And then what's going to be the price point for the affordable units?
Absolutely. Um, we're thinking that the um, the two bedroom homes will probably be in the 900,000s. Um, and then the very low millions for the three bedroom homes is probably what we're expecting. That being said, this is very market driven. And so things like interest rates exploding, which is what's been happening in the past month, will definitely affect that. So we're kind of waiting to see. We wouldn't publish a price until we were actually permitted and constructed. And I would, um, and I'll, I'll ask Mr. Fasati to jump in if I'm incorrect here. But that interest rate really does affect the calculation for the affordable housing too. So I believe that at the time that the homes are ready to go to market, it will be wholly dependent on where the interest rates are and things like where the HOA fees end up, um, coming out to.
Okay, thank you.
I, I do have another question. Uh, you know, so you had mentioned that you've had, you know, similar, you know, projects in, um, you know, other places and uh, would you mind telling me, um, maybe which cities you've had and also what has been the experiences, uh, you know, around those? I'm assuming that they're around larger metro, uh, metropolitan type areas there.
Sure. Um, it's, so we're, we're, um, one of those builders that doesn't really stick to a city. So we've built in very many of the Bay Area's, um, different locales. So I mentioned San Jose. I think we have five projects in San Jose. Um, we've built in Santa Clara. We've built in Sunnyvale. We're on our eighth project in Morgan Hill. I'm kind of sticking in Santa Clara County right now. Um, we have two projects in Fremont. We have two in Castro Valley right now. We're on our sixth project in Oakland. We, um, we're the city's developer at the Hope S.S. project in San Francisco, um, for one of their projects. Um, we have two in Burn County. We're on our eighth in Santa, I mean, I, I can keep going, but we really do hit a lot of the different places. In places like Santa Rosa, where we're not close to public transportation, you'll see a different home type, you know, usually it's single family homes or two story townhomes. Places that are close to public transportation, um, like on our San Francisco project or in Daly City. Um, you know, it's, it's a very similar home type. I will say this, and um, this is probably our third or fourth project in the North Bay doing these attached EDUs. So we're really excited about it. It's brought, um, a different, um, a different tenant into the mix. And so we really appreciate the opportunity to do that here in Mel Peters.
Thank you. Any other questions from any of the commissioners? Okay, no other questions? I see we have, uh,
I have one quick.
Oh, go ahead, um, Planning Director, please.
So I, I was just going to mention that I don't know if I'm following Samantha or she's following me, but we've worked on projects in San Jose when I was there and in the North Bay when I was working up in Sonoma County. So this is the third project, the third or fourth project that we've, um, reviewed for, for company, City Ventures. I did want to go back to the ADUs. Uh, and, you know, we talked a, a couple of things and the affordability issue. And one of the uh, benefits of the units with an ADU is that if a home buyer has that unit and rents it out, they can use that toward, you know, it's a source of income. So it, it helps them with their, uh, with their mortgage. And that in, in, it helps to make the housing unit more affordable to that homeowner. So that's, that's one of the strategies for, uh, making these units more affordable to a wider variety of home buyers is that they, if they buy that ADU, then it, it helps them, uh, cover their costs, their total costs.
All right. Thank you, Planning Director. Um, I see we have Chief Samora here. Just wondering if maybe we, you know, we can get some comments or, you know, anything you have and also an opportunity for the commissioners to ask you a question. It's great to see you in person, by the way. You know, I've, thank you for always being on Zoom. So, welcome. All right. Yeah. So just maybe if you wouldn't mind, you know, provide any comments around this project, um, you know, just sort of high level, just to kind of kick off. You know, any questions from the commissioners and any concerns that maybe the fire department might have?
Sure. So first of all, uh, good evening, Chair, Vice Chair and honor roll members of the Planning Commission. Albert Zamora, Deputy Chief Fire Marshal. I'm so happy to be in person because it's been a long time waiting. And I was looking forward to this opportunity. So I took every advantage and opportunity telling that I'm going to come in person and not do the Zoom. So that being said, um, this project, obviously, um, in terms of fire department access is pretty good. Um, I don't know if we have a site plan that we can show that that will kind of help facilitate that if we can get to the site plan. Um, that would be beneficial. Um, the thing is, is that what people have to remember is the, the units that face Montague, that is the initial point of contact or where we, where we would respond if there was an emergency call for service. If there was a, um, that's not the one I, the right there, that'd be fine. So going back, if the units that are facing Montague, that would be considered the front of those structures or those dwelling units. If we did get a call for service, that's where they would respond. The engine company would go ahead and stage, uh, right along Montague. If the, there is call for service on the Hurat side, then we would go ahead and traverse into Hurat Drive and into Hurat Court. Now, um, when we get into that Hurat Court, we have a cul-de-sac which is 96 feet in diameter, which is our, um, sizable for our trucks that can make that turnaround. So that's easy to, to go ahead and accommodate. Uh, we also have an EVA and the reason for the EVA is for some reason we have obstructions going through Hurat Court. We can go ahead and remove the decorative, uh, bollards and we can make access to there in case of additional, um, access if needed. So, um, and then once we get into the EVA, you can see there is a hammerhead that is a crosshatch, you know, that you could see that is leading towards the, the west side. Other than that, um, this project has fire sprinklers. Um, and so that's important. It will have a supervision by way of a fire alarm system. And so it does meet all the current fire code requirements. Um, and I know that was one of the comments that was made that I saw. And so I just wanted to be able to address it that, uh, you know, public safety is a top priority. So we want to make sure that we can get to these buildings, whether it be a medical call, a structural fire or otherwise. So that being said, we have a very good project that does meet the minimum requirements of the code. Earlier, you guys, um, we talked about the, the railings and Mr. Saradell asked that. The building fish is not here, but I'll speak a little bit to his behalf. Uh, under the building code, minimum height for railing is 42. Uh, when you have openings such as those horizontal slats, the space of the voids are such that they can't have a foreign sphere pass through it. So that's really making sure that we don't have little kids, if you will, that can make their way through that. So, uh, it does also meet the, the building code based on the, the, the graphic that I saw and what the parameters and requirements under the building goes. So that takes care of that issue. If there were any further questions at that point. That's all I have to present. If there's any further questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Chief Samora. Uh, planning commissioners is, are there any questions? All right, no, no questions from, um, Commissioner Galan.
Yeah, um, Chief Samora, there's a fire hydrant around the area.
Yes, so there're going to be fire hydrants along Montague. And I believe we also have some onsite private hydrants, uh, because we have to be able to go ahead and extend hose in, in case we get into the property. So you will have a combination both public as well as private hydrants.
So if there's fire, uh, this building facing Montague, so you will kind of park your fire truck if, if, uh, along Montague Expressway?
That's correct. Yeah. So what happens is if we, heaven forbid, but should we have a fire, then we would stage along Montague. And then we would coordinate with our police department to go ahead and do traffic control. Uh, but that's where we would stage again, as I said, stated earlier, because that, that is considered the front of the building because that's how they get their address. That's where we would stage. If we have something happen on the Hurat side, maybe we go inside the property and we go ahead and stage inside Hurat Court.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from any of the commissioners? All right, no, no questions for Chief Samora. Thank you, uh, Chief Samora. You're very welcome. Next, I, um, I see we have, uh, Steve Chan on. Uh, you just wonder if you had any, uh, comments around, you know, the project and particularly just wanted to address, you know, if you've seen some of the um, public comments that were part of the packet. Um, you know, if any, you know, comments around this project.
Good evening. Steve Chan, Transportation and Traffic Manager. Uh, for this project, uh, the public comment regarding traffic congestion, as we know, uh, there's substantial amount of morning commute traffic on Montague Expressway, uh, in front of this project frontage, uh, Hurat Drive. Unfortunately, that's a, a routine occurrence of, for commute traffic. Uh, but as, uh, Michael Fasati, Senior Planner, mentioned, uh, County of Santa Clara, Rose and Airport will be widening. Montague Expressway to add additional travel lane. This lane will be a HOB carpool lane to relieve some of the congestion on Montague Expressway. So that would definitely help in alleviating traffic and improving access on Harret Drive. The other question regarding can a new access point be created on Montague Expressway? Unfortunately, the county's position is that they are not entertaining any new or additional access or vehicle access point on Montague Expressway to, to achieve that objective to minimize further congestion on Montague Expressway. That's why they don't want to create more intersection along Montague Expressway. So that's unfortunately not going to be feasible. And regards to parking as a public street, Harret Court and Harret Drive has some limited on-street parking. They are intended to provide parking for guests and minor overflow for residents periodically. They also have currently four-hour daytime parking restrictions just so that bot commuter do not park on City Public Street to use the bot system. So those spaces would be available for guests and residents during the daytime hour. I think those were the three main comments that that was brought up by the public.
Thank you, Mr. Chan. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Chan? Right, no questions for Mr. Chan. All right. Do you have any comments, Planning Director? Okay, all right. All right, this is a public forum item here. Those interested to addressing the Planning Commission on the subject or through Zoom, please provide your name and city of residence for the recording secretary's records. Ms. Medina, our first, before I talk about the time, how many here in the council chambers are planning to make a public comment? Can I see or show of hands? Okay, so I've got four here. And how many on Zoom, Ms. Medina?
We have one community member on Zoom.
Okay. So with that, since there's only four, I'll go ahead and keep the three minutes for public comment. Okay, and comments may be limited to three minutes or less. As in an item, oh, it isn't an item. Okay, so I'm opening up the public forum. So anyone here in the chambers would like to make a public comment? Yes, just come in approaching and any of the.
Hi, this is Namil Tambadia.
Welcome.
I am a resident in the Ellison Park community. And I am living right across the construction from, from the proposed construction here on Harret Court. And I just wanted to like bring to your notice that like we are still in the pandemic and work from home situation yet, like our offices haven't opened. And we have been under constant flux of constructions all around. There was a school construction that was going on right behind our community. And also there, there is already a park construction going on. Having this construction right across my home, like from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, during which I have to attend a lot of these meetings for my work is going to be a lot of nuisance for me. And I wanted to, I, I wanted to see if Council can address this. Other comment I have is like, obviously, I want to reiterate that like I have been living here through, I mean, living here for two years now. And so across, on holidays and so on, like I wanted to reiterate that like there is literally no parking for guests available even right now. And it is making, like, it's been really difficult for our guests to visit our homes. The other thing I wanted to address again was that Harret Court has been like really congested when leaving the, sorry, Harret Drive has been really congested by leaving the community even right now and joining the Montague Expressway. There has been, like, it takes you literally like five to 10 minutes to just like exit onto the Montague Expressway, even before leaving for work itself. So those are the comments I wanted to see if Council can address. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, I'm going to go online to Zoom. Ms. Medina?
Yes, Chair, we have JP Lanois.
Yes, I'm JP Lanois and I'm a resident in Ellison Park. My first, my first thing is we only receive information about this building. With the postcard that we received last week. The first thing I would like to comment is there's not enough parking spaces in the, in the, in your residence so that the newcomers will have to park in our parking places in Ellison Park. Second thing I would like to say is the rental diversity, we are worried that it will bring down the value of our townhouses. Then the the proposed four-story are not in harmony with the existing estate because the existing estate in Ellison Park has three stories. And the four stories are only on the edge facing the school and facing Montague Expressway, but not. So the, the main part, the main thing is three stories only. So that all the other townhouses, your, your building will be much higher than ours. It's a block of you.
Yeah.
I think that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lanois. Okay, next, coming back to the chambers here, next resident that would like to speak.
Good evening, Council. I own two units behind in the commercial area.
Can I get your name and?
Yeah, my name is Surya Dhamija.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. I own two units in the commercial area behind this, you know, two, two buildings, commercial buildings. They have, you know, plans for this construction. And community has grown around us, as you have seen and you have approved. The difficulties which we get there is that the residents walk through with the kids for the schooling. They do biking, they do parking in our areas. And then the trucks, when they come in and out for the commercial area for the unit, I, by the way, I'm one of the officers of the the, the building there. We have about 10 owners there. And there we have these trucks coming, they have difficulties taking and watching the traffic around. The, the cars coming in from the, when you enter in the unit, towards the right side, all these residents, they have two exits to coming to the Harret. And both of them doesn't have stop signs. So they come and straight away going out into the streets without watching on the left or right. And they think that they have the right of the way. The, the, the area there is becoming a little difficult for our businesses to run there. So I like to know from the Council, what are the plans for that buildings behind that, which is the only building left for the commercial now? We have no knowledge of what is the plan of the city to, to do this with that building. So that's something I like to know. And you can send me an email or something. My email is surya@air7c.us. On the other hand, in these units here, as it is, there's a lot of traffic, a lot of cars, as you can imagine, that two cars for every unit. And the, the turnaround and the street size and the amount of space there to park, this gets very lined up in the morning. And in the evenings, when the busy times, so you probably have to watch that. I'm sure that you are also watching the carpool lane to be finished now, I heard from the traffic. So that should be better for the city anyway. And the, 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 the area behind, which is now this industrial unit we have, it's a one-story building. And we are wondering if city has any plans for us owners to.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. All right, times. All right, next resident, do we have anyone, Ms. Medina, on the Zoom?
We do not.
Okay, all right, next resident here. Welcome.
Evening, Council. My name is Kinara and I'm a resident of the Ellison Park community, right across the proposed project. And I have a few concerns. First of all, the primary school that is assigned to the residents, Maple Meadows, already doesn't have enough capacity to support the current students and kids. And with the new residences that are being built, such as the Graham Eleanor and one at, one at 1350 McCandles Apartments and the new one at Harret Court, it will add to the already prevailing problem of not sufficient seats for the students. And in the morning, if we have to travel far to drop off the kids, then we have to face the traffic on Montague and exiting to Montague from Harret Drive itself takes quite a bit of time because now we are returning to the pre-pandemic era. And I, I used to watch from my home just bumper to bumper traffic during the rush hours. So also, as some of the concerns are already covered, such as congestion on Montague and also lack of parking spaces. Literally on weekends, there is like very, there is contention on who's going to park their, their car. And there's a problem with guest parking already. Also, so, so these are the main points. And many of us are working from home, having construction going on in front of the house, in, in the school, in the park, is causing a lot of disturbances. And we, we have meetings all day long. So if anything can be done to address that. Something, it might not be too relevant, but we have a lot of thefts and packages that are being stolen. So adding more houses, it will be like a hot area for, for people stealing bicycles and packages to, to come in at midnight and even like in early hours. And it is a safety issue, especially with, with kids. In the evening, parents always have to be with them. So these are some of the concerns. And I, I hope they can be addressed.
Thank you. All right, next resident or next attendee here. Welcome. Thank you for coming to the Planning Commission.
Good evening, everyone. And I am talking on behalf of the Ellison Park community. So.
What's your name, sir?
Patrick Tambadia.
Okay, thank you.
And most of the points have been covered, like related to the parking space, which is a really big problem. And congestion during the work cars and work from home. So I do have one question that how can we accommodate our guests? Since there is not enough parking space. And I see that there was one proposal back then that we should use more of public transport and carpooling and stuff, but that doesn't seem to be viable. At this point, and like who is going to pay for Uber rides? So that's it. Since majorly all the points are being covered, I don't have.
Thank you very much. Is there, I see there's a. Okay. Oh, so those that did speak at the, one second. Sorry. So those that, you know, spoke at the, the door, the community members who spoke earlier, if you don't mind, just so we have a public record. You know, if you don't, there's, there's some cards over by the door. If you just fill that out and you can bring it over to Ms. Medina. All right, thank you.
Chair, we have one more person in the queue to speak.
Okay, it looks like it's actually part of the applicants.
Yeah.
So is this part of the, so go ahead. And if it's part of a public forum, go ahead, let's allow him to speak. If it's not part of public forum, then.
Let's just know me.
Okay, go ahead and bring, bring them in and. There's someone under Samantha Hauser. Okay. Okay.
Whomever is in the Zoom queue to speak, under Samantha Hauser, you can start talking now. If not, you can lower your hand.
Okay. All right, looks like the hand got lowered or. No, sir, we, just one, one comment per, per resident. You had your three minutes there, so. Okay, that's it. Okay. Okay, so if there's no one, no other public, you know, comments here. Can I get a motion to close the public forum?
Move to close the public hearing.
I have a motion from Commissioner Mosin. Do I have a second? I have a second from Commissioner Albana. Roll call vote. Commissioner Mosin.
Hi.
Commissioner Medina Ashby.
Hi.
Commissioner, go along.
Hi.
Commissioner Albana.
Hi.
Vice Chair Sardella.
Hi.
And Chair Chuan is I. Public forum is now closed. Okay. Zoo, I have any other questions from any of the commissioners or deliberations? Go ahead, Commissioner Mosin.
Thank you, Chair. I only want to make a comment. I really appreciate this project. It's, ADUs are much necessary now with the increased population that we have. And I do understand that there is a lot of people who live there are having parking problems. Which, I don't know how the city is going to address. Housing is a big issue. So I'm glad that we have ADUs. I'm glad that the buildings look new, they look square, they look glass, they look everything that I like. So I'm, I'm much appreciated. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. That's all I had. I just had a comment.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Mosin. Any other questions or comments? Right, Planning Director, do you have some comments you wanted to make?
If I could, would it be possible for me to share my screen?
Let me see. We may need some help from.
What I wanted to share was a land use diagram from the Metro Plan, which is a Metro-specific plan which will be adopted soon. Let's see, I do here.
Yep, it's coming up.
Okay, so this is not exactly the same as the existing transit area specific plan, but this is the plan that will, the land use, the diagram, land use diagram from the plan that will be adopted by the council later this year. And you can see running through the middle is Montague Expressway. It's wide at the bottom because the boundary between Milpitas and San Jose runs along there. So everything in the wide at the bottom of the screen is the city of San Jose. As you look up, you've got Montague coming up around the large blue sort of rectangle or parallel ground in the middle is. or parallel ground in the middle is made, that's institutional land use. That's actually Maple Mado School. North of that, the green, the larger green rectangle is the McCandless Park that is currently under construction, a public park. And then you have the light green areas that are either trails along the parkland or trails that connect all of those areas. So the purple in the middle is the area that we're looking at. And you can see that that comes in here. And I'll show you in a moment a historic photograph, but there used to be, this used to be all light industrial. And there used to be two cul-de-sacs in here, one of which where we're looking at. Or at court and the other one, the end, the cul-de-sac bulb has actually been eliminated by the plan. And it's now been incorporated into, part of it is school site, part of it is the park site. And then you have all of the existing Ellison Park neighborhood that is in that area. Those are the smaller purple boxes that you see for the north of that area. And then we're looking at those two parcels. So the, you know, a lot of the issues that we're hearing tonight, we hear often in these meetings because it's about change and change can sometimes be a little bit, a little bit unsettling. And the way that we try to manage that change is through the planning process. So the metro plan that you see in front of you is a 20-year plan. And over the 20 years, as we continue to see this area develop, we'll see it built in. And the residential and the mixed-use zoning here has been in place for more than 12 years. And you can see that most of the area has transitioned. And it happens to be that these last two parcels or two that have not yet transitioned. And then there's the area with the nine condominium, commercial industrial buildings that are left. Now, what I wanted to point out in showing this is that there is a white dotted line from that existing cul-de-sac down and over to McCandless. And that is showing that the plan is calling for, as those other lots develop, that there would be some type of a street connection through to McCandless. And that will help alleviate some of the traffic issues that we hear. We, you know, I think those are totally valid comments, totally valid concerns of traffic. If you've ever driven on Montague in the afternoon or in the morning, you know that's just terrible traffic. So that is through the planning process again, that is how we're trying to address that particular concern. Unfortunately, the city isn't a landowner here. We can't force the road to go through. And it happens, as we see tonight, that as projects come through, the change happens piecemeal as each project and each parcel, these happen to be two larger parcels, but each parcel develops. Then we ask for the infrastructure, just like tonight, as this project has come forward. One of the things that they're required to do is to give a land dedication to the city for the widening, the future widening of Montague Expressway. Again, that's not under the control of the city, it's under the control of the county because Montague Expressway is a county road. So there are, according to the planning process and looking forward 20, 10, 15, 20 years, there are changes in place to address many of the concerns that we've heard tonight, particularly with traffic, most of which would be that widening of the expressway and then new roadways that are conditioned or planned to be eventually built sometime. It's just hard while we wait for that to happen. And it's always hard when the development comes in and the project is there. And then we have to look a little bit to the future to say, well, what is this eventually going to look like? How will that all fit together? The other thing I want, oh, and let me show you the, I think it's very interesting. If I can get to it. Let me stop that. If you look, it's very interesting to see the historic photograph of this neighborhood that's included in our plan. Yeah, so here's that same area. It's kind of the same view. So you see Montague, the curve of Montague Expressway coming up. And all of this area used to be large industrial, light industrial buildings. And we, if you're familiar with over, along McCandless, all of those buildings have transitioned to housing. And all of the buildings on the northern part, north of Horret Court have all transitioned. And you've got these last few that are done. And you can see in here those two cul-de-sacs I was mentioning, one that is still existing and the other one that stands over. So that's, oh, and what's interesting here, I think I can, yeah. Oh, yeah. If you look at that same area. Here. I, I can't get the pointer to show on here. Anyway, you can see here that same swoop, the curve of Montague. And you can see now, so this first view, this is 2006. And in the past decade or so, you've transitioned everything over. Here's the housing, Maple Matos is there and the park area. And then you've got really on Horret Court, these last three buildings that would be transitioned to something different. And again, the way we manage that is through the planning process, calling for mixed-use or residential development there. And then the last thing I'll say is just about parking, because I, you know, it's definitely an issue. This is the transit area and sometimes it's hard to bend our minds and our vision around a different type of living in a transit area. But I always like to explain that hundreds of millions of dollars were spent to bring the transit station to Milpitas. We're very fortunate to have now access to regional, a regional connection, really, to the entire area via BART, as well as to the larger regional area via BTA Light Rail. And all of that converges within a half mile of this area. So as we look at it, the transit area specific plan calls for, not only does it call for a reduction in parking spaces here, because the expectation is that people who live in this area will utilize transit. But also, under the state density bonus law, which we've heard a lot about tonight, if we meet certain, if the project meets certain affordability requirements, which they're actually required to do under city ordinance, 15%, they then open up a wide variety of benefits in the form of waivers, one of which is specifically about parking and a reduced parking standard. And this isn't optional for the city, it's a state mandate. We are required to allow a reduced parking standard for this project because of its, not only because of its location near transit, but also because it provides 15% of the units for moderate income households. So for those two reasons, that's why there's such a reduced parking standard here. But each of the units does have a parking place. They're not actually required to provide any guest parking, but there is room for four guest spaces, one of which I believe was an EV space on electric vehicle space on the site. So it is a limited amount of parking. I think we can all plainly see that. We would hope that, again, the people who live here would recognize that. And they, if they're having a gathering at their house, they would encourage their guests to use Uber or Lyft or park at a distance and then take the bus that will drop them in front of the house. It's again, sometimes it's hard for us to bend our minds around a different way of living. But in this transit area, that is the expectation of the plan as it looks. And other areas of the city are available if we want to have more of a suburban lifestyle. So this is just a special area in the city where different rules of land development and really different rules of lifestyle apply.
Thank you, Planning Director. Any other questions or comments from any of the commissioners?
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Galong.
Chair, I have a question about the parking spaces on Harret Court. Actually, right now, how many cars you look at right now before this project? Is there a lot of cars parked in the Harret Court? The Harret Court, those parking spaces, full or available, how many? Actually, right now, is there a lot of cars parking, right now, I mean, before this project?
The one thing I want to address, though, is that the cul-de-sac is built as for industrial uses, it's going to shrink a little bit. So I'm not sure if. I know that there's parking available on 1752 and 1810 Horret. I don't know how many cars are being parked on the cul-de-sac.
Okay, I like this project. It's a very nice project. But if I want to purchase one unit, I'm going to ask about the parking. Let's say a three-bedroom, and you're allowed only two parking garages. For sure, this three-bedroom, for sure, there are going to be a three-car. You know, maybe it's special as own car. So where they can park, they can park in the Harret Drive or Harret Court. This is how many available parking space on that Harret Court?
I'm not sure I can answer that question. I think that if they have three cars, then they're probably going to be at a disadvantage because there's going to be, they have a parking accommodation for two cars. The way the transit requires a parking accommodation for two cars, for a three-bedroom unit. So, so, and this is for clarity, this is good for all of us. In the transit area, you can't build more parking than required. We have a maximum parking required. For a three-bedroom unit, the most parking spaces you could build is two cars. For two, for three-bedroom. So if someone said, hey, I have three cars and I have three bedrooms, maybe that's not the place that they want to purchase. Or they may want to consider using another multimodal transit.
Can you park on the Harret Court?
No, Harret. Harret Court?
It's Harret Drive, across, Jack in the Box.
Jack in the Box is on South Main?
It's Jack in the Box across the street, no. What?
It's a Carl's Jr.
Oh, I'm sorry, Carl's Jr, yeah. Can you park your car across the Carl's Jr?
On McCandless?
No, in Harret.
Yeah, if I may, there is a Jack in the Box, there is parking there, but it's private parking. So that parking is available for patrons of the fast food restaurant. And I think if a resident parked there, unless they had a the permission from the property owner to park there, they're going to be towed.
And then they're about a half mile away, too.
Harret Drive, the Harret Drive.
Horret, oh, Horret Drive.
It's a public street. I think there are a limited number of parking spaces on that street as well as on the cul-de-sac. But again, it's a public street, so where there are public parking spaces are available for anyone to park there. Thank you. But I would just add, if somebody has three cars, they would probably, or they're going to have three cars, they would probably consider living in a different neighborhood because this one does not have parking to accommodate three cars for that unit. But we plan and we build the units according to the standards that are provided in the city zoning ordinance, the specific plan. We don't build according to the needs of a specific person. The choice is theirs where they live. And if they have, if their choice is to drive a car and have three cars, then they're going to park in a different, they're going to live in a different neighborhood where parking is available for them. This is not that neighborhood.
All right, Commissioner Albana.
Thank you, Chair. It's just a comment, you know, all cities all over, we always have parking problems. I mean, I live in a private, a little better neighborhood, but we always have problems with parking. In the first place, I think my family owns six cars. So I'm telling my son, we cannot do that. So anyway, that's, what I'm saying is, when I see this project, we always have a need. We have a housing crisis, we have a need with parking, we want to expand schools. But we have to meet the need of the city. And this housing crisis and this project, I believe, is also, we're meeting the priorities of the city. And we, and I thank Chief Zamora here and also Mr. Channel of Traffic by giving us information of how we are providing safety net for, to better the traffic, to provide safety when it comes to fire hazards and everything. We're going solar and this is the wave, this is the new wave. And with this project, we're meeting the housing crisis, we're bringing in more families. I being in real estate, when my client says he has a collection of cars, of 45 cars, then I bring him up in the hill where we can have eight garages for his cars. So it's, it's meeting the needs of the generation and this, and this, the wave of how we can improve our city and we're growing. So definitely, this project is meeting our need. And I would say, we will, we always put our heads together, but through the council, of how we could always, you know, provide safety and improve our traffic. Thank you for even the staff for doing a due diligence in making sure that all the ordinances and general plans are in place and that it is, I guess, compliant with. So I would like to thank also the project and Mr. Assasi here for putting this together and giving us all the information.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Albana. You have any other comments from any other commissioners or questions? Okay. All right, if there's no other questions, do I have any motions or?
Motion to approve City Venture Townhouse 17521810 Horret Court?
Oh, actually, Commissioner Mosin, there's a look on the screen, there's the recommendation. Yeah, on there.
Sorry, oh, yeah. Adopt Resolution 22-005, recommending City Council approves site development permit SD21-0012. Do you have to read the whole thing?
Yes, please.
Oh, okay. Conditional use permit number UP21-006, Westing tentative map MT210002, density housing permit number DB21-001, three-roomable permit number TR21-0035, and environmental assessment number EA21-004, subject to the conditions of Google.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Mosin. Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
All right, I have a second from Commissioner Medina Ashby, roll call vote. Commissioner Mosin.
Aye.
Commissioner Medina Ashby.
Aye.
Commissioner Galong.
Aye.
Commissioner Albana.
Aye.
Vice Chair Sierdella.
Aye.
Chair Chuan is I. The motion passes, the resolution's been adopted. Congratulations to the applicant. And I want to thank Chiefs Zamora and Traffic Manager Steve Chan. Thank you for your time and thank you to the residents here.
Just a quick planning director comment, sorry to interrupt. Unfortunately, the other residents have left Holyville here. This item was a recommendation to, by the Planning Commission, to the City Council. So the final decision-making body on this, because there is a tentative map involved, will go to the council, it's currently scheduled to go to the council on their meeting to be held on Tuesday, June 7. Is that the right date, Michael? Yeah, I think if I got my calendar, sorry, I should know, but I forgot to write it down. Yeah, scheduled for May 7, or excuse me, June 7. We'll see you again then.
All right, thank you, Planning Director. Next item on the agenda is new business. There's no items. Planning Director, if you had anything there you wanted to add?
No additional.
Okay, thank you. All right, legalese, any person agreed by any final decision of any board, commission or department head to the city of Milpitas may appeal the decision to the City Council by filing written notice of the appeal with the city clerk within 12 calendar days of the date of said decision and paying the required fee. This time limit shall be strictly enforced. Next item is adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn a meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I got a motion from Commissioner Medina Ashby. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Commissioner Mosin? All right, roll, Commissioner Albana, sorry, Commissioner Albana made the second. Okay, roll call vote, Commissioner Mosin.
Aye.
Commissioner Medina Ashby.
Aye.
Commissioner Galong.
Aye.
Commissioner Albana.
Aye.
Vice Chair Chuan, I mean, Vice Chair Sierdella.
Aye.
And Chair Chuan is I, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.